All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the State Board of Education Monthly Meeting, Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's eight thirty-two A.M. And Suzanne is assisting us this morning. Good morning, Suzanne.
Good morning.
And we will start with the role health.
Mohammed Job.
Mohammed Job.
Here.
Here.
Gray Farren.
Gray Farren.
Here.
And I am hearing an echo.
Hearing an echo. Yeah.
Let's see.
See.
Someone may have two devices on.
Devices on.
Kim Gleason.
Kim Gleason.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Tammy Colby.
Tammy Colby.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lyle Jepson.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Here.
Tom Lovett.
Tom Lovett.
Present.
Present.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Here.
Rich Warner.
Rich. I was gonna say, Rich, I think has.
Has. Yeah.
I only have one. Do you have one?
I only have one. I only have one device. I'm lucky I can get on one, so believe me, I would never be able to get on two.
Well, I'm not hearing the echo anymore. Okay. Aleah Wilburn.
Try coming back in.
Here.
Here.
Maybe, Rich, if you don't mind.
If you don't mind.
Bye-bye.
And Jennifer Samuelson. I'm here. Good morning. Um, so the next order is amendments to the agenda. I do have one. Um, I'd like to amend the agenda. Um, item H, which is our EQS update, um, and include that, um, as a possible vote. Um, Tammy?
I'd also like to amend the agenda, um, to include a discussion and vote regarding the State Board of Education's budget planning for this year.
Great. Um, shall we put that? Maybe let's put that after the post-secondary school approval and before future meeting planning? Slot it in there?
I, I have a hard stop today at ten, so if, if it might be better. I'm gonna leave that conversation. Might be better to do earlier.
Okay. In that case, why don't we put in after, um, the Special Education Advisory Panel with Katie Ballard?
Thank you.
Okay. Um. Are there any objections to those two proposed amendments? One is to amend item H to include a possible vote, and the other is to, um, include a new agenda item after Agenda Item E to include a discussion and possible vote on the, um, State Board of Education budget? Any objection? I'm not hearing anything. Okay, great. Alrighty, um, so this takes us to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board, um, you may either raise your hand, um, on the Teams platform, or if you're calling in, uh, star five to raise your hand. And I'll just double-check. I'm not seeing anyone. All right, well, as always, we will leave this item open for fifteen minutes. Um, I will move on to Agenda Item B, which is to approve the draft meeting minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the draft meeting minutes over December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Tom, is there a second?
Mohammed.
Mohammed.
Seconded by. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the draft meeting minutes for our December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we approved the minutes. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of our January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All right, all those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to board announcements, um, I've got a couple. Um, first is, I testified last week before the Senate Education Committee regarding the State Board's search for a new permanent Secretary of Education. I did include my, um, slideshow in the agenda packet. Most of you will probably recognize that that was basically the same thing that I presented to the State Board at our November monthly meeting. I just kind of dusted it off and updated it. Um, Tammy and I also testified before the House Education Committee last Friday with regard to the State Board's annual report. So again, I really took the report that we prepared, um, and sent to the General Assembly and turned that into a slideshow presentation, and, um, we had a pretty rich conversation about the role of the State Board, and I think it was really informative. I think there were, um, committee members who maybe didn't understand the work that the Board does, you know, how we receive that work, um, and we, we've got some follow-up that we want to talk about, which really kind of feeds into, um, Tammy's new agenda item. Um, I'm also testifying tomorrow, um, before Senate Ed again with regard to proposed updates to, uh, two thousand and two hundred. And the last thing, um, as far as I'm concerned for updates is, um, I did reach out to Gray, and I also spoke with our attorney, Sarah Buckston, who has, um, her firm has an intern from Vermont Law and Graduate School with an idea to have, um, her intern and Gray work together to research other state boards, how they're set up, statutory authorization, level of compensation, and really kind of put together a survey of, um, you know, where the State Board of Ed fits in the spectrum of work that's required, money that's paid, um, with an idea that this might inform a possible request to, uh, the legislature to shift, um, the current practice with the State Board of Ed. So I will pause there if there are any questions or comments. And Tammy, if you want to add in, um, anything about testifying before House Ed last week, feel free.
Sure. I think, um, it was a nice conversation and certainly nice to be invited. Um, I think the, the committee was very interested in having a better understanding of the role of the State Board. I think there are some concerns on the part of the legislature, or at least that committee, about who's setting sort of the vision for public education in the state, particularly with some of the challenges that are coming up. Um, you know, I think Jennifer and I stressed very much that we are the public in the public education system, that, you know, we are one of the very few points of contact for the general public to sort of access, rulemaking, to, uh, provide comment on other kinds of policy issues, practice issues, um, and even resource issues. And I think the committee was very appreciative of that. Jennifer and I stressed, um, the volume of work the Board has been engaged in, particularly over the last year. I think, um, Jennifer was, what was it, number sixty meetings we've had between the subcommittee? Sixty-one. Um, that's a lot of work. I think we all feel that on a, on a daily basis. And, uh, to Jennifer's point and, and to, related to my motion, I think there is going to be a conversation around, um, potentially, um, having a stipend for the Board going forward. Um, in, we would be putting that forward in, in high formal budget requests, though it also includes some funds for, um, having counsel on retainer, but we can talk more about that. So I think it was a great conversation and it was, uh, nice to be invited, and I think we walked away with the House Committee understanding a little bit better about the role of the State Board and the work that we're doing.
Thanks, Tammy. Any other comments or questions?
I just, um, I'm wondering, Jennifer, with the research that Gray is gonna undertake with Sarah's intern, is the, um, is the premise that maybe we are doing work that other state boards do, um, do not do? Um, what's, is there a premise going into the research, um, that, that will guide it, or is it just, uh, fact-finding?
I'm really thinking of it more as fact-finding, because, I mean, we are a different Board, obviously, than any other state Board. But I think, you know, my takeaway in speaking with House Ed last week is that they were surprised, both with the volume of work that the State Board is undertaking, as well as, um, struck, you know, maybe that's a good verb for it, by the level of compensation. And, you know, there, there seems to be some interest in revisiting that. I, I don't know what the outcome of that would be. I think there was an interest in at least considering, um, you know, what the State Board is being asked to do and the rate at which the State Board members are compensated. And I thought, you know, before we, it's, it's hard for me to go to anyone with a request without kind of understanding the lay of the land. So it's for my benefit as much as anything, just so that I can have, you know, that background knowledge, so that I can make an articulated, you know, intelligent request that's based on something.
Thank you.
If I may add something, Jennifer. The, the House Committee also has, um, asked, uh, a group of students at University of Vermont to do research on the role of state boards more generally, um, and so they're, they're interested in that. So I think the focus of our inquiry is around understanding the extent to which, um, state Board, the level of effort and the extent to which state Board members are compensated, so that if we are in fact asked to provide a budget, right, that would include some sort of, um, stipend for state Board members, it would be based in some sort of fact, you know, as opposed to a number we might just pull out of our heads.
Thanks.
So more substantiation for a budget request than, than a real in-depth look at governance.
Okay.
Although the House Committee did, was very clear that they are looking at governance. So, you know, I think these are two different things.
All right, I'm not hearing any other, or seeing any other comments or questions. Any other board announcements? All right. Um, let me circle back to, uh, public comment if any members of the public wish to be heard. Got a few more minutes on that one. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so I will turn it over to Aleah and Gray for the student report.
Aleah, do you wanna start?
Uh, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
You can.
Okay. Um, school-wise, we just started our, um, second semester. So yesterday was our first day of classes. Um, I mean, that's, that's really it. It's basketball season, so, um, I'm currently, you know, playing basketball. Uh, our game got canceled yesterday because of the snow. Um, yeah, I mean, we have Dancing with Staff on the twenty-ninth, um, which I'm kind of helping organize that. Um, I mean, that's really it. The, it's just sports, but the weather sucks, so everything keeps getting canceled. Yeah.
And Aleah, you did have school yesterday?
We did, yeah. Yeah.
Now, I'm remembering you missed our December meeting because I think you had chorus rehearsal. Was that?
Yeah, we had a concert.
And that went well?
Yeah, yeah, it went really well, actually.
Was that just a one-off, or are you part of a, um, like, club?
Um, so. It, so we, like, we have chorus, and I'm in select choir also, which is just like a group of individuals that, well, like, you have to try out to be in select choir, and you either get in or you don't get in. Um, but the concert was like chorus, select choir, um, band, jazz band, and then to, like, um, outside of chorus and select choir groups that I'm also a part of.
Nice. All right, any comments or questions for Aleah?
I just, um, Aleah, thank you for that, and then I'm wondering, as a fellow resident of the Northeast Kingdom, um, last night was a flurry of, uh, of comments as games started to get canceled, whether or not we're too quick to do that kind of thing lately, um, versus the quote-unquote "olden days." I wonder if, if there's a feeling among the student body up there, if the, uh, if the "too quick to cancel," um, or cancel school, cancel games, uh, is there any talk up there?
Um, I think for us, so at our school and in our area, we think that we cancel on days that don't need to be canceled, and we don't cancel on days that should be canceled. Um, so, I mean, I think yesterday with, I mean, with how the weather turned out today, I think it was right to cancel it. Um, but also it wasn't our school that canceled, it was the other school. But Linden is only thirty-five minutes from us. So I know, I have, I have mixed feelings about yesterday's game in general, but, um, I do think that it's better to be safe than sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right, Gray, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Uh, can everyone hear me? Because I wasn't sure if I got my mic working earlier. Okay, good. Um, on the snow note, I wanted to know, that's also something my school talks about a lot. And I think a lot of it is that it's a beginning-of-the-snow-season type of thing. I think that's when it's the most difficult, because people are very panicky with kind of earlier snowfall. I mean, it is kind of mid-January, so there shouldn't be the earliest snowfall of the season, but it is, since we haven't had a lot of snow before this in a large sort of way. So I think that's just when it gets messed up, is that, you know, the first time it snows, it's always a panic, and then later down the season, it can be a foot of snow, and no one cares, because we're out of snow days, and people don't want to keep extending the school year. You know, it's the same as when you're sick. You can take a sick day, and then the next day you get more sick, but you're out of sick days, so. Um, anyways.
That's probably with student observation.
Uh, at our school, it's also, our semester just ended. Today is our first day of classes. Uh, we didn't have school yesterday. It wasn't related to the snow, though. They just, um, teachers still went in. It was just an in-service day. And our musical is starting. That's another thing. It's Mamma Mia this year, so our first weeks of rehearsal have been these past couple of weeks, and that's in full swing at this point. All of our sports seasons are still going. Um, I'm in indoor track, and that's one of our shortest seasons, actually, just because everything we do is through UVM, because it's kind of the only indoor track we have available. So we have Sunday meets that start at eight in the morning. We're kicked out at two-thirty, and we've already gone through all of our meets, and now we just have two weeks to stay. So our season actually ends in January, so it's a, a very, very rushed season, unless we qualify for New England's, which hopefully we do. And that, that might be it. I can't think of much else that's been going on. It's kind of a slow time in the year right now.
Well, so in, I believe you're in Mamma Mia, right?
Yes.
You were able to both do indoor track and, um, the musical, which at least, you know, locally, my high school, you, you kind of have to pick one activity. It's almost impossible to have two activities in the same season. So that's terrific that you can do both and satisfy both interests.
Yeah, that's a very Virgens thing, and that's something I always appreciate about Virgens, is a small enough school that the school itself can't get, really get away with encouraging people to do a single activity. So of the fourteen people on our track team, thirteen of them are in the musical. Um, so schedules always just kind of have to line up, because, you know, when fifty people are in the musical, that means it's like a quarter of the school. Uh, so, which I, I've always appreciated, because I do, you know, I have lots of stuff going on. Um, and it's nice not to have any one of those things, because I know, yeah, lots of other schools, if you do a sport, that's, you know, they're not moving their schedule for anything. That means you can't do other things. Um, and I, I appreciate the flexibility of the gens.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Gray?
I have one that might apply to both Aleah and Gray. Uh, you both have just finished a semester, and I wonder what that looks like at your school. Um, is there an exam period? Is, um, are there major, um, interim assessments? Uh, what, what does it look like at your school?
Um, we don't have any official exam week, although lots of teachers will do, uh, final tests in the last week, you know, or like, I mean, it depends on the class. The way we do it, we have, the first semester is four classes. We have four classes in the day, so it's four classes every single day. Some classes switch back and forth. We do still have, we have like an A and a B day. So some things will switch up, like if you do band and chorus, they'll switch. But largely, and for me, it was just four classes, the same class every single day. In the new semester, it's all different classes, and the only exception is AP classes, in which case they either continue or they switch to every other day. So like, that's the case for me, is all four of my classes were AP classes, so I still have all four of those classes. Two of them are still all year, and two of them switch back and forth. But for lots of people, the end of semester means the end of some or almost all of their classes. So like, um, the theater arts class, their theater arts play is in that final week. And for the humanities class, they work on a ten-page paper the whole time, and they give a presentation to community members, and that's a big deal, so that all happens in the final week. So it's, it's more of a, it's a happy week for a lot of people, I think, because there's not too much work most of the time from teachers. It's not like exam week, but it's lots of, uh, you know, the final stuff in the class, not necessarily test-related.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, it's the same thing for us, kind of. It's just lots of projects and, and maybe like final tests, but there's nothing, like, there's no set exam week for us either.
Great.
Great. Well, thank you both. Um, I'm gonna circle back one last time for public comment, if any members of the public wish to be heard. And again, I'm just gonna double-check. I'm not seeing anybody. No, okay. Well, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. I don't know if Katie Ballard is with us, or if we should move on to the next agenda.
I am.
All right. So let me preface all of this by saying, um, I'm sorry, Katie, because I remember, I believe it was October of two thousand and twenty-two, you came to an in-person meeting of the State Board of Ed, you were scheduled, you were on the agenda, and we ran over on other things, and you had to leave before we were able to get to you. I believe the same thing happened to you in November of this, of two thousand and twenty-three, where you were on the agenda, we ran over, um, and then you had to go. So I'm really sorry. Um, obviously, these things happen. We try to stay on schedule, but I'm sorry that you've been a casualty of that twice. Um, so I'm glad to have you here today, and, um, just welcome you, and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Uh, first of all, you know, that's how meetings go, and I've always been really appreciative of the communication from the different folks, um, supporting you all and from, from members of your, your Board directly. So I, I just wanna say, I really appreciate any time that things have come up. You guys have been really great at communicating. Um, so today, um, I am really just here trying, kind of giving an update about where things stand. Um, don't really have a, a presentation ready, only because some things are, um, I would say continuing to be in flux, so.
So, and Katie, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you, um, sort of back up a little bit and just explain what the Special Education Advisory Panel is, and like, why? I, I, by statute or by rule, you're supposed to give quarterly updates, but I think it'd be helpful to kind of understand, um, the capacity in which you're here today.
So, um, and my name is Katie Ballard. I am the Chair of the State Special Education Advisory Panel. So per the, uh, law, the IDEA federal law that, um, governs the education of students with disabilities, every state is required to have a advisory panel that's charged with various tasks. One of them is providing feedback, um, on different proposals, um, rule changes, and plans with AOE for, um, corrective action, things like that. So there's a federal regulation that requires each state to have, um, one of these panels, and it also requires these panels to be majority parent or people living with disability, um, members. So that is something that our state has worked very hard, um, over the last few years, and have finally kind of gotten in compliance with that key. Um, but basically, our panel now offers feedback and provides, um, thoughts on various proposals or regulations to the Agency of Education, and now, um, to the State Board of Education for the last year through these kind of quarterly updates, or, um, you know, other times when topics come up that are relevant to students with disabilities. Is that, uh, good enough?
Yeah, that, that's just, I think we may have some new members since the last time you came in, and it's always helpful to remind members of the public, too. So thank you.
Yeah, and I, in all honesty, I think I forgot. This was my first time actually speaking to you guys this year. Um, it feels like it has been a very long year already, um, for sure. So, um, basically, one of the things that our group has really, um, looked at and is really navigating is, in the last year, after Jackie Kelleher, um, left the Agency of Education as the State Director of Special Education, um, we, as a panel, really went through a pretty significant period of time where we struggled to be able to get, um, information, um, or statute from the AOE to be available at our meetings, which kind of made it harder to finish some of the projects and the priorities that we were discussing last year. Um, and that also complicated our membership in terms of, we actually continue to have two people who now participated almost every month for over a year, one being a person living with a disability and one being the, the Executive Director of VFN, that we have still not been able to get appointed. So we've, we've kind of struggled with some of those pieces, um, which, all of which to say, we're really excited to have Heather, um, and I can never say her name right, but I believe it's Willis Doxy, uh, joining us as our new State Special Ed Director. And that has really given our group kind of this, I would say, revitalized, um, the excitement and kind of given hope for, um, some of these different projects to start wrapping up. One of the areas that we identified as a priority and spent a lot of time focusing on that we've been able to recently make recommendations on, and we will get you the letter, um, with the recommendations. But that area would be critical staff shortage. Um, so we identified that there are some very significant concerns around not having enough special educators, but also not having enough specialized providers. So that could look like assistive technology, um, speech-language pathology, those, those other areas especially related to students who are homebound or who are in alternative school settings. Um, those students who have a higher level of need that require some of those more specialized providers or alternative placements have not been able to attend school consistently due to this critical staff shortage, and at times a para not being available or other staff. And so parents are just being told, you know, their kids can't come to school. And so in talking about critical staff shortage, some of the things that we looked at were the exit surveys for people who have left the special ed field. We also looked at data. We looked at some of the different places where professionals in the field were able to identify, these are some of the challenges. Um, these are also some of the solutions. And so part of our goal in looking at this was to really identify where are the places that, um, we would encourage the Agency of Education to really look at or monitor data a little closely. And so there were some recommendations, um, that you'll see in our letter around those. Um, and we also made some suggestions on data to track. So looking at the, the number of students who are unable to attend school because there's no staff or because there isn't a placement available to them, the number of students who are unable to get their services um, that are in their IEP because of those staff shortages. And then also looking at what is it that we could do as a state to incentivize new educators coming into the field or other providers, um, to kind of help look at the different areas of our state that have, there are very different experiences depending on where you are. there are very different experiences depending on where you are. If you're in Chittenden County, like myself, you're, you're fortunate that you do have access to a lot more options. And those options waitlist, like Stern Summer waitlist right now, I think is about nine months um, to get an outside evaluation. So we have a lot of students who are just kind of struggling through these waitlist times, these other different things. And this is no fault of the educators and the providers kind of in the system. We have some really amazing people trying to do really amazing things and just having a limited capacity to do so. Um, we also talked about kind of the education, the higher education piece of it. Are there things that we need to be doing to support new educators in these fields? Um, is there things in terms of licensing that we might look at? So those are all pieces that are going to be captured in the letter. Um, I believe we're doing a final kind of making sure that everything looks right, making sure everybody's on the same page. And then that will be going to, to you all and to the Agency of Education. Um, another area that we have really are going to be focusing on in the next coming month is, as I mentioned before, membership. We've finally, I've now finally met with the Governor's Office, gotten clarity and hopefully been able to move those two applications forward. Um, and now that we also have Heather, we're really going to be doing a pretty intentional outreach. Um, we are out of compliance with a number of roles and that partially is because we have very limited amount of professionals right now who have the capacity to take on much more. And so part of our outreach is to reengage some of the people who maybe in the last year started to engage, but because of issues with appointment paperwork and not being able to access the stipend or feeling like their time would be better spent somewhere else, we did lose a few people. Um, so we are really in a good place to be moving that forward and hope to be able to report by the end of the year some major progress in that area. Um, we, as a group, have decided that our, our big focus this year is on transitions. So that really primarily is looking at the older age range. So looking at the age when students are first becoming eligible for transition services. Looking at what exactly are transition assessments? And how are those kind of, how are they done? How are we ensuring that those are good measures? And how are we connecting those evaluations to the transition plans that are required to be a part of an IEP? Um, one of the things that we have done is partnered that, so there's a, a group and I apologize, I can't remember the name off the top of my head. Uh, but there's a, we were chosen for a grant with a significant amount of money over the next few years to focus on transition. And so one of our members will also be a part of that group. Um, and able to kind of bring some of what we're talking about and learning at our panel to that group, but also able to bring what that group is working on to our group so that we can kind of make sure as we're both continuing the conversation that we're staying engaged. One of the areas in terms of transition that we've already kind of identified that we are looking at is how, how the transition plans are monitored. How are we monitoring the outcomes? Um, we don't have a lot of data on what happens after a student graduates. Do they actually achieve that goal of being in a, a program within a year or being in an employment position within a year? So that's one of the things that, um, our group and the AOE are talking about and trying to think through some recommendations in terms of monitoring, really trying to think through and encourage, you know, how do we get, um, everybody to have the same information? And I think we have been really fortunate. John Spinney and Anna Russo from the Agency of Education have just, they've gone above and beyond in terms of the way that they have shown up to support the group this year in discussing transition. So that's also been something that we're really looking forward to being able to make recommendations on, um, in the near future. Then that, the last priority that, that's kind of gonna wrap up the beginning of our year is kind of looking at the patterns of strengths and weaknesses, um, how that's being used and how, how professionals in the field are feeling as it relates to, um, the rule change. We've heard from a number of parents some concerns, um, and some parents who are really enjoying the experience. Um, and so we now wanna kind of focus on trying to get feedback from professionals in the field so that we can start to understand, is there something that we would wanna make a recommendation on? Or is this something that we feel like is already being? Um, the AOE has a pretty robust, uh, technical support page and team around us. And so we're just trying to kind of identify how those experiences can kind of support each other and if there's enough resources for all of those different groups, um, in the conversation. And that, I think, is kind of our, our priorities as they stand right now and the places where we have been spending the most time.
So the letter that you've referenced, um, when, because you haven't sent it yet, correct? You're still working on it?
Correct. Um, we have had, um, a couple of people who were, were involved in writing it who had to step away unfortunately due to changes in their life. So we, we have others who have picked up kind of wrapping that up and anticipate having that letter out, I would say, uh, by the end of the month, within the next month.
Okay. Um, would you wanna come back in once you have sent the letter just to, uh, follow up on it? I know we talked about quarterly and this feels like it would be often than that or more frequent, sooner than that.
I will say that, um, it might make sense after, I would say, I don't wanna say next month for sure, but within the next month or two, not only will the critical staff shortage letter be, um, wrapped up, we're also working on a letter in terms of some recommendations around the indicators um, that are related to transition. Um, and I believe there's one other piece. So it might make sense, um, if after those three pieces came out. Uh, if you wanted to and had time on your agenda, myself, and I would probably ask to include Jackie Kelleher, who's our Vice Chair and has been kind of playing a key role in supporting some of these conversations. But I'm sure we would be happy to come and, um, answer any questions and kind of briefly speak to those as well.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments for Katie? Kim?
Hi, thanks. And hi, Katie. Um, I am just wanting to uh, follow up on your reference to how the rule is working for those in both probably in the field and for families and students. And I wanna just check my assumptions on that. Is that related to the Act 173? Rule changes like 2360 and, um, in that there is sort of a looming question out there regarding, um, clarifying MTSS in EQS. Do you have any thoughts on that? And then finally, I know you referenced also the substantial guidance on the AOE website, and I think that was in reference to MTSS. Um, and we also continue to hear the sort of inconsistent implementation despite the guidance. So just really any thoughts you feel comfortable sharing on that category of questions?
I would say, actually, it's both MTSS and the rule change as it relates to specific learning disabilities and the process for which they become, they can become eligible. Um, which some schools use the response to intervention or the patterns of strengths and weaknesses. Um, which, uh, we have had a number of parents and, and professionals who have shared very different experience, experiences, some concerns, um, and definitely some, some positive feelings as well. But I would say there's, there's growing concern that while the intention of the rule change as it relates to specifically the learning disability piece um, and then change in how that process looks. Um, coming from parents, we're hearing a lot of concerns that it feels like the patterns of strength and weaknesses is not clear enough. And therefore, there's, there's gray area which feels like is being potentially a way that students are not being found eligible that potentially should be. Um, and then I would say there's also feedback where we're hearing from professionals in various roles, not, you know, just school districts and, and special educators, but hearing kind of, there's an inconsistent across, across different districts, the implementation, how it looks, how it's understood to work for students with disabilities is inconsistent. And that is leading to, I think, just some frustration in trying to understand how to navigate um, the process since the change happened. And in terms of MTSS, I think we, we have ongoing conversations about um, different things that have come up for that. I would not necessarily want to speak, um, on that right now for the panel. I will say it's possible that when I come back to discuss those other priorities that we're wrapping up, we might be in a place where I could give a little bit more, but that's definitely on our radar. And I would say for the next quarter, um, update would likely be something that would be captured there.
Thanks, Katie.
Anyone else? I will say, Katie, that, you know, with regard to the, um, staff shortages, um, I mean, I think we all know that this is a pervasive problem throughout Vermont and throughout the country where they're just, you know, we are short teachers, we're short
Yeah.
support staff. It's, it's a problem and I can imagine that it has a disproportionately bad effect on, um, kids who need special services. So, um, I will, you know, be interested to read your letter, but I just, I, I know that you guys are probably experiencing this, um, firsthand, so that's gotta be difficult.
You know, it, it has been, but one of the things I think that I at least found kind of exciting is when we were talking about this, the group that worked on it looked at some of the other states. And so that's really what we've been spending a lot of time doing is looking at other states that have similar structures for governance, some more different kind of features, um, as, as Vermont, and looked at what they're doing, looked at some of the incentives, looked at some of the, the hurdles that they've been able to kind of overcome to try and see are there solutions that might be able to be tweaked and fit here in Vermont that we can bring as well as some of those concerns, because we really are trying to be solution oriented. So being able to look at some of those other states, I think Connecticut was one, and Texas maybe, and, um, Massachusetts. So there were a few of them that had some really good ideas. So that, that will be included in the letter as well.
That's great. Um, well, we look forward to seeing the letter and having you back. Um, oh, Mohammed.
Hey, Kate, thank you for, um, debriefing us. Uh, this is very helpful and meaningful. You've been in my head about a lot that you have mentioned already, and I appreciate Kim's questions as well. Um, going back to, uh, the support staff shortage, uh, I've been noticing, um, really many schools are struggling around it, and mainly just because of the contract issue. I think this is something that people need to start digging into, uh, just like you mentioned, I like the, uh, exit survey uh, ticket you mentioned. Uh, maybe that has come or will come out, um, but I'm noticing and hearing a lot that support staff are mainly, um, college students who are here temporarily, um, maybe leaving, uh, when they graduate and/or, uh, some locals, but who, um, do not feel rewarded enough, um, to stay on the job. I'm saying this just because when there is a snow day, as an example, they are not paid for that day. When school is out on a February break or whatsoever break, um, students, I mean, um, support staff is not paid. And that is not just around special education, that is across the board, at least around us here. I've been noticing it and I have once been a support staff as well. I, I lived it. It's painful. Um, so you're not getting paid well enough and then when you did not close the school, the schools chose to close the school due to the weather or vacations, then you are not paid. And people are, you know, everything is becoming way too expensive and people cannot just rely on uncertainties. I just wanna, I wanted just to mention that piece. But again, thank you for being with us today.
Interestingly enough, we actually are fortunate to have, um, one of our members, one of the two that we're hoping to get appointed. Um, he, they are not only someone who identifies as a person with a disability, they also work as a para in a school district. Um, so the voice of support staff have, have been actually very well represented in a lot of these conversations. And so a lot of that kind of information about where the barriers are for them specifically in those roles um, also came out in the conversation. And just one last thing to mention to your point, um, there is some of that exit interview information in our letter. Um, we were able to get that data from the AOE, but there was, um, there was a significant amount of information from, I wanna say, like, three hundred and thirty-five um, folks who, who had left the special education field or the education field. And that was really helpful in looking at this. So, um, I would encourage anybody who might be interested to, to take a peek and see some of the trends and the themes from that.
Were those three hundred and thirty-five people all from Vermont?
Um, it was a survey that was done through the AOE, so I believe it was, it was all Vermont. Um, and I don't wanna necessarily, those numbers may be off. I just remember it was a pretty significant amount of, um, data. And it was, it was really helpful to see both the positive and, you know, some of the negative as it relates to special education specifically.
Thanks. Heather? And good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm sorry that I was late. Katie, um, nice to hear from you. Um, it's always nice to, um, hear an update from you. And I'm sorry, I came in while you were sort of probably closer to finishing your update. I just wanted to know if, um, the panel has had a chance to, um, meet with Heather Willis-Doxy, our new State Special Education Director, yet?
Um, yeah, so she's actually, uh, attended two meetings, um, with us now. Um, and I've actually met with her, um, once and myself and Jackie as both the past State Director and Vice Chair. And Heather and I are actually meeting again next week. So she's jumped in with, with both feet, um, and been really engaged with the panel, which has been absolutely amazing and we've appreciated it.
I'm really excited to hear that. Um, just for the board's benefit, um, this was a position that was pretty hard to recruit for and fill and, um, it took us, uh, well over a year. And I think we have a pretty phenomenal, um, new State Director. We had a great, uh, State Director, uh, before. And, um, I'm really happy to hear that, Katie. Thanks.
I, I think the most exciting part about it is, uh, she's coming from Florida and she's got some really exciting um, and, and passions about literacy. Um, so that really ties well with some of our priorities around the patterns of strength and weaknesses and those conversations. So we're definitely very excited to have Heather here in our state.
And I would say a word to the wise to anyone in the public or, or anyone here. Um, recruit out of Florida for educators. Um, they are leaving in droves, as you might imagine. I'm, I'm really not kidding. Um, because, um, it's become a really tough climate there for education. So. So anyone who's interested, set your sights on Florida, I would say. Thanks, Katie.
All right. Any other last comments or questions? All right. Well, this has been super helpful, Katie. I really appreciate you coming in today. We will look forward to receiving the letters and then having you back in a couple of months to talk about it.
Sure. Thank you. And again, if there's anything that is on your board's radar that you would like us to look at, think about, or, you know, provide any feedback on over the coming months, please don't hesitate to reach out. We're always happy to be a support and resource for your board as well.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day, everyone.
You too. Thanks. So Heather, you missed, we amended the agenda. And so before we get to your report, we do have a somewhat quickish item. But Tammy made a suggestion, and we are going to be taking up a discussion and possible vote on state board's budget. So I'll turn this back over to Tammy. This really goes, I mean, it originated with Tammy's in my testimony before House Ed last week, and we were asked by Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Conlon to come back to House Ed with a proposal. You know, if we're talking about the work that the state board is doing, and, you know, the budget, it sort of begs the question of, okay, well, if we are advocating for change, what does that change look like? So Tammy and I have had some conversations about it. And Tammy, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So we sort of foreshadowed this in our update already with respect to our meeting with the House Ed Committee. But there is some interest on their part in having a budget request come from us. That budget request, as I understand it, should include a couple of different components. One would be funding for to have independent counsel on retainer to help us with, you know, just all the kinds of things that are coming up, as well as specific requests for counsel to help us finish up the existing role series work that we're doing. We do have a budget for that, but we're going to exceed that given sort of the volume of work. And so the committee asked us to sort of give them a number around, what do we think we need to just have someone on retainer for dealing with routine things, such as a hearing officer and some of the other kinds of things that we're dealing with, who represents the state board and the state board's interests? Not, right, because we oftentimes have our own interests in this conversation that was independent to us. And then again, for rulemaking, related to rulemaking, we also had a conversation with the House Ed Committee, which went like this, which is, you know, if they're going to ask us to do more extensive rulemaking, it might make sense for them when they assign those tasks to us to then assign a budget to us or additional funding to us for counsel. But the budget request right now would be for independent counsel on retainer, and also to help us finish up the EQS and the 2200 series work. And again, we're already sort of into that. The second piece was, and I alluded to this earlier, is there is some interest and tolerance for thinking differently about compensation for the board members' time, given the volume of work we're doing. And Jennifer has already initiated an effort to do some research around board compensation in other places, both within the state and externally. And so the second part of the request would be to go back to them with saying, like, here's what we think is reasonable. The third part of the request might also include consideration for us reinstating our membership as a state board in the national organization. There are lots of times when we're asking these questions, like what goes on in other states? Right? We no longer have a budget for that. So in general, it would be this task of developing a budget that we would propose back to House Ed. But right now, our budget is embedded in the agency's budget, and that also creates some challenges for us. For example, this year, there's a 3% cap that the agency faces on budget increases. And that means our budget is subject to that, too. Well, that doesn't really work with how our work is, how we do our work, right? So we, for example, have to take another look at Act 46, and we're going to need substantial help with that from counsel. That wouldn't work within that structure. So the House Ed has also asked us to consider and think through with them ways that we might create a new line item for the State Board of Education that is outside the agency, which if you think about it, makes sense, right? Like, we no longer are, the governance structures have us as really separate entities, and to have our budget subsumed within the agencies doesn't make a lot of sense, particularly if we're no longer relying on the agency for independent counsel going forward. So there's sort of this conversation around, let's be far more transparent and have a line, a public line item for the state board with a formal budget request that comes in from us. And, you know, Jennifer and I would like to get that conversation going with them around that. The trick here is that, you know, things in the legislature move quickly. And what we would like to do is ask for the board's authorization for Jennifer and I to work on that budget request and sort of engage in those conversations with House Ed and have the board's authority to do that. Again, we would keep the board updated, but some of this is going to be sort of fast paced. And what we didn't want to have happen is we get in a situation where we're trying to have a special meeting to try to, you know, to try to figure these things out. So Jennifer, you want to add anything there?
I think you hit everything. So I will pause there and see if any-
Discussion questions?
I'm willing to make a motion if you'd like.
I love your motions, Rich. That sounds great.
Okay, well, I think you asked that we move to allow Jennifer and Tammy to work on a budget to present to House Ed?
Yeah, and if I might amend that, I think it would authorize-
Or just tell me what to say. And I'll make it.
Well, I can make the motion, too. I, you know, I think we'd like to have a motion that the board authorizes chair, vice chair, to prepare our budget proposal on behalf of the State Board of Education and submit it to both the House and the Senate Education Committee.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
We'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Okay, so Heather, at this point, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks. Thanks, Chair Samuelson. It's nice to see you all. I'm sorry that I was a little bit late this morning and missed our opening activities. I have a few updates I wanted to make sure that you're aware of. Three are kind of, they're not really great updates. One is kind of mixed, and then I'll end with a nice positive update. So the first is that the agency is partnering, but it's really, we're really just facilitating the Department of Health getting Narcan kits out to schools. Yes, this is where we are. So we're starting with around 75 schools that have actually asked for Narcan kits to be available, and Vermont Department of Health will be providing training. One of the pinch points is that we need to continue to work through, and why we're starting with 75 schools who are interested and wanting to work on this, as opposed to the next phase, which is making sure all schools have access to Narcan, is that some details around who needs to be trained, what the logistics look like at each of the schools is going to be really critical. So for instance, there's a real sentiment that it can't just be nurses that are expected to deliver Narcan in the unfortunate event of either a student or adult, you know, employee overdose incident. So good news is that we're getting ahead of this. That has not happened to our knowledge in a school yet. But we're definitely, just given what's going on in society, our health partners have definitely been calling for this, this is needed. You know, I think one of Rebecca Bell, who you may know, who's a pediatrician that's really well respected in Vermont, and she has been saying, like, no one should die in school. And it's a grisly comment, but I think it's real. And, you know, this is kind of where we are. So that one was the mixed bag update, given that this is a really not great topic. But, you know, I think that there's a good plan afoot. Seems like there's some feedback. The other couple of updates I wanted to share that are a little bit, one is definitely not good news. So it's looking like, increasingly like there might be a real 2024 cut, which would be this current budget because of the continuing resolution potentially not extending for our title funds for schools. And so we're watching this very carefully. We've been here before, but I'm bringing this to the board's attention because it's, you know, Anne Bordinaro, who I think you've met, is our federal liaison, and she's the director over all of the federal title programs. And so she's very connected to what is happening in DC. And, you know, the news is not looking great in terms of, you know, the perfect storm of ESR funds are expiring. There's a lot of fluidity in terms of budget planning and budgeting in DC. And then also, as you surely know, we have, you know, we're facing some pretty big increases to our education funding at a state level. And so, you know, I'm just more letting the board know this. For those of you that are connected into districts, this will be something that they may have to grapple with as we get more information. So obviously, that would not be good for us or any state if federal funds are cut or even level funded, frankly, which is what constantly happens. But as we know, that's still kind of a cut because of cost of living. But we're talking now about a real cut potentially happening. So more to come on that. I don't have any more specific details, because again, it's a very fluid situation. This has happened before, and we haven't really always brought it up, because sometimes it's kind of like the usual, this is happening. But it does seem a little more dire this time around. Lyle?
Thank you, Heather. What are the dollar signs we're looking at as far as how much money comes into the state? And is it primarily at the elementary level that it's expended?
I'd have to go back and get that figure. I don't have it off the top of my head, but we are definitely talking millions and millions of dollars at a state level. I think the answer about whether it mostly goes to elementary schools is kind of a hard one. So the title dollars are really meant to provide supports for students who need additional help with literacy, math. And then there's also some other pots of title dollars that are used for expanded types of supports beyond sort of the core math and literacy. I would say that, yes, most of the funds tend to go to elementary grades, because that's where districts are leveraging those dollars to make sure that students are starting out on the right foot and are continuing to get those supports. But I don't want to imply that there are no funds, you know, deployed at the local level on a middle school or high school students. But it is more typical that you would see title dollars aimed towards the, you know, K through six range, so covering some of middle school. We can get that information for you pretty easily. We have all that. I just don't have it in my brain, my fingertips today.
I assume there's substantial staff associated with all that across the board?
Yes, and it might affect staffing at the agency as well. But yes, there's staffing at the LEA level. And I think the real issue is a lot of these other funds are going away, and, you know, our local funds are strained right now. So in a different scenario, the last time we had some cuts, we would, you know, step in and, you know, charge more to the education fund to cover those. It's going to be really tough, really tough right now this year to do that. The other thing to note, too, is, and this is always really tricky. So the federal fiscal year is actually the, it's, I want to make sure I get this. So the federal fiscal year is starting July 1st of '24. There are always like, their year is like a year behind ours. So like, we're budgeting for what we call at the state fiscal year '25. Those of you, like I see Jenna nodding and stuff, those of you who are on boards know this. But the federal, we don't align with like what they call fiscal years. So it just makes it a little complicated in terms of trying to keep all the, when this impact would be straight, or would be, keep it straight in terms of when the impact would occur. But some of these cuts, if they're linked with this continuing, the current continuing resolution not being, you know, continued, the continuing resolution not being further continued, could potentially impact our cuts right now, and that would be federal fiscal year '23. So we're really just keeping a big eye, a close eye on all of this. And we have already been working closely with the field to let them know. So this wouldn't necessarily come as a surprise to them, but it doesn't mean that the job will be easy at all. And it's just not coming at a great time, given all the other economic pressures. I told you I didn't have great news, and I, you know, I'm sorry to be the messenger of not great news. The next one is about the state PCB program. So I did want to let you know that Julie Moore, the Secretary of A&R, and Dr. Levine, the Commissioner for Health, have been testifying in the State House, particularly with House Ed. And I think they're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna join Secretary Moore tomorrow, maybe later today, for just a brief moment, because they have come up with a, we have come up with a plan, although it's largely A&R, because they found some funding to extend kind of a revised PCB program, trying to really understand and address the significant challenges that this program has been on our LEAs. And so I think they're listening. And so what this program would do, and this is all subject to state legislative approval, is it would, there's enough funding, if approved, for A&R to continue testing and focusing on mitigation. So right now, the program has really been focused on testing, and then if there is a problem, and it's much more detailed and nuanced than this, so this is just a broad sweep. But if there's a problem, it, you know, the state and the LEAs have been really focused on, we have to fully remediate this. And what we came back to kind of, what we at AOE came back to say is like, look, this is really not working, like there are some other factors here, right? Like, so we need to be also thinking about the health of students with respect to having to leave their school or having, you know, classrooms shut down. So they're listening. And what we suggested, and this is under the leadership of Jill Briggs Campbell, I think you met her last meeting, is can we make sure kids are safe, first of all? That's, of course, the first order of business. But can we also, if they can be safe with less drastic measures, can we do that that will allow, that will allow, you know, it'll reduce the frenzy a little bit of, you know, trying to actually fully remediate PCB contamination? And so we approached, you know, I think there were people in A&R that were arguing for this, too. And so we approached the leadership of A&R and VDH. We came together, and they seemed to agree that this might be, you know, a possible way forward. It's not, you know, this is just a really politically fraught topic. So they are not backing down from the safety implications. They're not interested in getting into a debate about the levels. They're really holding firm on that. So we've been trying to facilitate and just make sure that this is going to be actually doable if it's the, you know, the judgment of the legislative process that it continues. the legislative process that it continues. So happy to take questions. There are some folks that you know, there are some problems with this because they really wanted a full stop on the program. There are others, I think rightfully so, that are saying, well, what about after fiscal year 25? What then? There are issues around equity and testing and mitigation efforts. So the, the one thing, the last thing I will say is that this new plan would cover about half of all of Vermont's schools. The idea is that they built the, they built the formula for identifying schools that would be potentially contaminated so that more of them are found upfront and that there would be a tail where you'd have less and less schools being found to contain PCBs. They're still saying that. I don't know if the, so far the data have borne that out, but they've also said that, you know, they did, they did the best kind of modeling they could. That's a question I would say more for A and R, but it's a concern. I think many of us thought it would look a little different and it would be, you know, all of the schools that had PCB would be identified right away. And then we'd almost even now, like at this point, be sort of in a a downside and in terms of identifying schools with PCB. And in, and what's happening is, I mean, every, every week, there's just a mix of, you know, some that have PCBs and some that don't. And I don't think that pattern has changed at all since the start of the program. I promise I will finish with a positive. I promise.
Let me pause there. Are there questions from board members thus far in Heather's report?
Lot of serious looking faces, understandably.
And just with the Narcan kits, are those going to, I mean, is the idea that they will go to all Vermont schools or just, you know, the high schools?
No, all, all eventually. And so we're, we worked to kind of get a pilot going because at first Vermont Department of Health was just going to literally just send all these Narcan kits to all the schools. And we were like, oh, my gosh, that would be a disaster. Please do not do that. Can we work with you and actually get like a program up and running so that, you know, that they're just, you know, I can envision a poor superintendent or, you know, principal walking in on a Monday and there's suddenly all these like Narcan kits in their office. And like, that's just not how we operate, right? Like, we need a little bit of bones to this. And they were receptive. I mean, for their, for, for them, just like with the PCB, it's all about safety. And, you know, they have a very different model. The, the medical model is very top down, like, you know, here it is, go do it. Like we said that. And you know, I think we all learned some lessons in by partnering through COVID that, you know, the education system doesn't really operate that way. And we need more facilitation and support and scaffolding for a lot, for health initiatives.
Thank you. Jenna?
I just wanted to add Heather mentioned faculty or students. I want to add families too, that are on property, dropping kids out for people on them up. And some schools have had Narcan on their campuses. Like I don't think this is like brand new for some schools. I think some school nurses have been proactive and over the past decade and have had Narcan and trained some personnel. And the training is literally 15, 20 minutes. I mean, it's like, it's pretty basic training to keep someone alive. Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Jenna. And one of the challenges that we heard is that some of the schools that were interested were getting mixed messages about how to get the Narcan, how to actually access it. And so we've been trying to kind of, you know, make sure all the trains get in and out on time because there were a lot of different messages kind of coming and going. And so if you know of schools that have done that, actually, it would be wonderful because I'd love to connect. If I'd love to connect them with Jill because they might be great, you know, just folks for those who are new to this to connect with, to just, you know, anytime we implement something new, there can be some challenges. And yeah, I mean, I haven't been trained. You know, I, I, I agree, it's pretty simple, but I think it's first also, as we just kind of went through, like getting over the gulp of like, here we are. Right? That we're talking about. And many schools, like you said, some schools, like you said, have already gone through that. But I think for a lot of our schools, like acknowledging that it's bad and this is where we are, as opposed to we have a safe bubble because it's school. And so, you know, I think that that's more more part of the almost training to happen. And then, you know, there will be communities where this might be rejected. This, you know, this might not be something that goes over very well. So again, I think that's why we wanted to help and and make sure we can facilitate those conversations.
Thanks.
Would you like to? I have one more update that's positive, but first I'll let Mohammed answer me, ask me a question.
I can't wait for the positive one, but thank you. Hey, I, I'm reflecting about the PCB you talked about. I know we're testing buildings and somehow found really horrible. And a perfect example would be BHS up in Burlington. That has been demolished already because of its existence. I'm mentioning this just to think about people themselves who have occupied the building, who've worked there for years. And understanding the impact or effect, bad effect, I may say, of PCB on humans that can even damage your neurological, you know, dementia and cardiovascular issues. Do we have any thoughts around, I, I know this might require some forensic work, but I know testing buildings can be helpful, but are we thinking about people who occupy the buildings as well to support?
So that would not really be under our purview at the Agency of Education. That would probably likely come from the, the Department of Health. And so it might not be a bad idea, Chair Samuelson, to, to have either the Commissioner or one of their folks, if this is something the board is interested in. It's, it's a joint project between the Department of Environmental Safety within the Agency of Natural Resources and then the Department of Health. I think it's a great point. I don't think that it's been attended to very well to date. I think it, I think the focus has been on, let's make sure that we can get these physical places safe. It's a great question.
Thank you.
So the last positive that I wanted to end on is that on Monday evening in the State House, and I can connect you if you're interested with attending with Sigrid Olson, who is arranging, who has been the logistics arranger for this ceremony. It's our, it's our Presidential Scholar Awards Ceremony for Vermont. It is, I can't go unfortunately, which is a huge bummer to me. It is one of the most wonderful, fun, feel-good events that you could go to because you will get to hear about all these amazing things that our state Presidential Scholars have done. There's a separate group of CTE Presidential Scholars that was put into place under, I think, the Obama administration, if I, if I recall correctly. So it's just a really good, really wonderful time. Parents come and, and so the, the process is, so if you're not aware, there's a National Presidential Scholar. So this means the US President. There's a National Presidential Scholars Program, which is about picking two students from each school to be a, from each state, excuse me, to be a Presidential Scholar. And so each state has a statewide process where we identify who the state Presidential Awards are going to, and that's what I'm talking about. And it, just to hear about the backgrounds of our students and then also the incredible things that they have done, like incredible things that, like even as a full grown adult, like I have not done. And probably you have not done. It's just cool. It's just cool to, to really hear about it. And it's really, it's in the State House, so it's very fancy. The, the dress doesn't have to be fancy, but like, it's just really nice for families. And I think the students feel very recognized and very special, at least for one evening. And so again, I heartily recommend attendance. And if you'd like details on, I've given you the where, but exactly when and parking and all that, just, just let me know or let Maureen and Suzanne know and they can, they can get you that information.
Well, I'm remembering we, we invited them in last year to our state board meeting and some of them came and it was really fun to hear about, you know, the, the different things that they were doing, you know, what their plans are when they graduate. It was a really nice aspect to that meeting.
Did you invite all of them? Because there are like forty plus, I think.
I don't know if Maureen and Suzanne can help me.
Yeah.
I feel like we.
Because we have two that are the final, the finalists that go to, their names go to DC. Yeah, we haven't, I don't think that those have been selected yet.
Well, I, I want to say we maybe had six to eight who actually came to our meeting. It was not certainly the entire group.
And actually, I might have just misspoke, misspoken because I think, I'll have to check on this. I think they DC selects who the two are from each state. I don't think we pre-select that. It's a little bit different than like our Teacher of the Year. It's a little bit different. So I think we give, we give the president, you know, the, the program at the national level, all of our Presidential Scholar nominees. And then they, they decide who the two are, I think. I have to go back and check on that. Details. But anyway, Monday is really a lot of fun and there really isn't a lot of distinction about, you know, two will be selected and that. It's really like they're all amazing and wonderful. So it's great. Hopefully that was a positive, which is what I promised. It's why we all do this work. Why we all do this work.
Exactly. I think that's a fine way to end it. All right, Heather, thank you so much for your update. That was, you know, the good, but the, the, the bad, the reality of everything. But it's good to hear. So thank you. Okay, so moving on, Rule Series 2200 update. As board members know, and just to sort of remind everyone who might be listening, we did have a special, well, the 2200 Committee, the public comment period closed, the committee, which is Tom, Kim and me, assisted by our legal counsel, has been working to process public comment. We have identified areas where we have questions as, you know, we're processing public comment. Is this something that we feel comfortable responding to right now? Or is this an area that we'd like some more feedback on, whether that means reaching out to other stakeholders or whether this is a legal research question? So Sarah has been taking notes and compiling the committee's feelings about things, flagging areas for additional research, and she's working on that. And will be coming back to us, you know, as she completes that work with the updates. What I started to say is we did have sort of that joint special meeting at the beginning of the month where it was really because of quorum issues, it was raised, it was warned as a special meeting of the full board, but it was really the opportunity for the 2200 and the EQS committees to come together and talk about themes that implicate both sets of rules. And so we identified again, some areas where we've asked Sarah to do some more research and come up with proposed language that she will then take back to each committee. With, again, the idea is that the principles and goals of Act One, as they are implemented in both EQS and 2200, will be substantively the same. We are not looking for, you know, less than or more than from one rule series to the others. Any changes would really be made in recognition of governance structures. So for instance, public schools would have a school board and a supervisory union or supervisory district. Those constructs don't exist in an independent school setting. So she's changing that language to reflect, you know, it would be a Board of Trustees, for instance, but substantively the same requirements and expectations would be, oh, thanks, Tammy, would be the same for both rules. So I will pause there. If there are any comments or questions on 2200 before we move on to EQS. So in EQS, I know Kim is still with us. I think, you know, I would say that EQS is kind of following that same framework. The research, or I know we've gone back to stakeholders with requests for clarification that would be helpful to the committee. And the other thing that the committee is undertaking is there's a lot, if, if you read the EQS definitions right now, there's a lot of language within the definitions that really expounds on the definition. It's not the definition itself. It's, it's more like the aspirational, the intention behind the definition, the goal of the definition. And one of the conversations that has been had is the idea that, you know, that's helpful. It's really helpful to have that clarification and that context. But definitions themselves are not actionable and the better way to make that more effective and forcible is to put that language in the context of the rule itself. So Sarah is working to take that language out and put it into rule and, you know, much like she did with 2200 when she was reorganizing, being very, very transparent about if things are being cut and pasted, where they've been moved from, where they're moving to, to make sure that board members and members of the public will really understand, you know, where things have gone and why, just to make it more user friendly. So she is currently undergoing that work. And, and Kim, I don't know if you want to add anything if I've missed anything.
Um, I don't, I don't think really much of anything but that we have put the independent committee meetings on hold while we wait for updated documents. And I checked in with Sarah last night to see when we might expect that so that I could anticipate that and then look to get a doodle poll out for the EQS committee. I think it's quite likely that we have at least one more meeting that is not really related to crossover issues, but in that some of what was in definitions may become part of the operational sections that are referenced in our comments. I think it is helpful to be working from a stable draft. And so as Tammy and I spoke last night, we thought when we have an idea of the timeline for that draft, we'll get a doodle poll out to the EQS committee for probably at least two meetings. And, and try and lock those down. So our committee knows what to anticipate for timeline. I think, and I'm not sure if this is going to be an action item, Jennifer, but I think what we're recognizing is that to have gotten EQS into the LCAR formal filing would require that we had completed approved documents by the beginning of February, which we aren't going to have. I think to no fault of anyone's, but that trying to true up these documents together is going to put a rub on our timeline with LCAR. So Jennifer, I'm not sure if that's an action we're looking for, but I think we need to extend. And, and there was some conversation as I listened to the testimony that Jennifer and Tammy shared with House Education to acknowledge that there are some challenges in having a few things defined in the statute within Act One. And then recognizing that the language of those types of definitions has been fluid. And, and we have been reluctant to memorialize or codify language that we know has evolved in the field within a rule series that we're responsible for. So there had, Tammy and Jennifer both expressed that these are some areas as examples of rubs in the statute and legislation that's out there and our ability to make operational and implementable rules, a regulatory rules, a regulatory situation and move that forward. So I think the timeline we need is partially dependent on how they choose to move forward. And I, I will acknowledge that one of the comments we received was related to, um, the implementation timeline. And I think importantly, recognizing that our committee has talked about truing those all up to July 1 of 2025, which means, um, it's not perhaps quite as urgent. We do expect though, that our work is helping to guide as districts are planning their professional development. Throughout, these are, these are not sort of standalone efforts in pursuit of aligning school practices with the values of Act One. I think it's the work that schools are doing currently. And the more guidance we can provide them, the sooner we can do it, the better they can do their work to make these operational in our schools. So, um, we're mindful of all of those challenges together and doing our best to get it right. Even as we heard, um, I think House Ed described the concern with, um, perfection being in the way of the good that could happen when we move it forward. So, um, those are all true.
Yeah. Thank you, Kim. Yeah. When you, when you crunch the timeline, and just as a reminder, according to rulemaking, once proposed rules are filed with the Secretary of State, by statute, we have eight months until, um, we need to be with LCAR, um, the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, which is a rather ambitious timeline, particularly when you look at, you know, the, the EQS Rule 2000 series is particularly voluminous. It affects, you know, easily ninety-five, ninety-six percent of Vermont students. Um, there have been a lot of updates, a lot of stakeholder input and a lot of moving pieces. And so that eight-month timeline becomes a little bit ambitious. And, you know, to Kim's point, when, when Tammy and I met with House Ed last week, and one of the slides that I, you know, threw in the slideshow was that, um, there are places where it would be helpful, um, if the General Assembly could, you know, step in because we identified some, some pressure points that we're experiencing as a board, as we're trying to craft language that on the one hand implements, you know, the goals of Act One, but on the other hand, um, stays within the confines of our legislative, um, constraints. So I think the plan is, is that we are going to follow up with House Ed and just say, here, here are some, you know, real issues that we're struggling with. Here are ways that the, the General Assembly could help us. And if the General Assembly is inclined to do that, please let us, you know, give us a deadline by when that might happen. Because that will implicate the length of extension that we would be requesting from LCAR. If House Ed comes back and says, you know, you guys are on your own, that might be a different extension. But it seems clear that under any circumstances, um, we would need to have an extension from LCAR, which, you know, my understanding and speaking with counsel is that, the time to do it is forty-five days before our deadline, which I'm just going to cheat here a second. I think our deadline is March 25th. So if you count back forty-five days from there, that would be February 7th. But because LCAR meets, I believe, the first and third Thursdays of the month, this really means that they would need to have something in hand, you know, whether the proposed rules or request by February 1st. So that is the timeline that we're working with and that the plan is, is that Tammy and I will, um, work with our legal counsel to put something together for LCAR to request an extension. This happens, this is nothing, it's not a failure of the State Board of Ed. Um, and we just really want to stay within that forty-five day timeline so that our request, um, will be received well. And, um, I'm sure that it would be granted if we requested it.
Thanks, Jennifer. I, um, I also want to acknowledge that before the state board received the proposed changes from the Act One Working Group, they had invested months, years really of, um, yeah, deep stakeholder engagement to get to their proposed recommendations, which we received, I believe in April of 2022. So the, um, EQS Working Group has, Tammy and I sort of quickly began planning. And then I think we began meeting as an EQS committee in May of 2022. So just acknowledging the hard work that went into, um, the body of the recommendations that came before us and the amount of time that we've taken to make sure that we've unpacked and brought, um, uh, voice and feedback to our process. And a deep commitment to having this wrap up as quickly as possible. And, and bearing in mind our challenges with, um, avoiding major pitfalls we can anticipate, but also avoiding that not all of it will end up being perfectly what all would hope it to seem to be. But this is a pretty seminal document for school districts. It informs, you know, largely almost everything they do and doesn't change all that often. We don't want to have a phase two on this, frankly. Um, because I think the last time this was updated was 2014. So, um, I guess we request some patience and also know we appreciate the urgency.
Yeah. And I think too, that, um, once these rules go into effect, it would be important to give schools the time to implement them. And, you know, realizing that these things take time. And so we, yeah, I think the idea is to get these in good shape, launch them and then let it percolate. Um, and let schools work on implementing it. So I'm going to make a motion, um, that the board authorized its chair and vice chair to find a reasonable date for extension and to follow up with request to LCAR.
I'll second that motion.
Um, seconded by Rich. Need further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? All right. The motion carries. Thank you. All right. So we are a little off schedule, but, um, I'm going to turn it over to Tom for the post-secondary school approval. This is the first one, um, to my knowledge, that the state board has, um, handled, certainly for a long time, but maybe ever.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to, um, going to do three things. First, I just want to give the board an overview of the process that we're following, um, for these post-secondary approvals. Then to talk about the specific, um, school in front of us and what we learned about that school. And finally make, um, a recommendation that we accept the agency's, uh, or the secretary's recommendation, as you saw in the green sheet. Um, so I'll end by just reading the motion that's in, in the green sheet. Post-secondary approvals are governed by Title 16, Sections 176 and 176A, um, depending on whether or not the school is chartered in Vermont or not. And for our rules, um, they're in the 2200 series, starting in, uh, 2240, um, is where the, the rules governing this application and process, uh, that's where they live. Um, there are two types of approval that we can give. One is a certification of approval to grant credit. And the other one is a degree granting authority. And that's what we're talking about today. Um, so that involves an application. And then, um, the agency hands it over to the Vermont Higher Education Council, or VHEC, um, to go visit the school and prepare a report that is similar to what we have seen from the AOE, uh, for independent schools, same kind of thing. The standards that they use when they go to visit are very similar to the New England Commission of Higher Education, uh, which used to be part of NIAS, but now has become its own commission. Um, and so you'll see in the report that they, they give you a narrative of what they found and then summarize for each section, strengths and concerns. And then at the end, they'll have a part two where they evaluate the strengths and concerns and suggestions, um, bringing the, the strengths and concerns to, um, that they want to highlight at the end of the report. It used to be for three years, our, our approval, but we changed, um, if you remember the requirement, to be accredited for ten years. Um, in that process, um, two schools were grandfathered from that. Um, one was the school in front of us, the Northeast Baptist College, and the other one was the Center for Cartoon Studies. However, now, as you'll hear, um, New England Baptist is now pursuing accreditation, will be a candidate in the summer and will be accredited within the next five years, um, probably earlier than five, it looks like. So that's, um, that's a little bit of the, of the background of the process. Um, I guess I'll stop there and see if there are questions before I launch into, um, the specifics on Northeast Baptist College and their renewal of approval. Okay. So, um, this is a relatively new college. Started in 2010. Uh, it was approved in April of 2014 for three years on the condition that they submit annual reports to the agency. Um, the renewal process did begin in 2017. They submitted a self-study that September. They did a, a site visit by VHEC in January of 2018. And at the results of that visit was a conditional approval for two years. Uh, there was concern over the ability to provide full compensation to their staff at that time. In response, the college requested a hearing for a four-year approval. Um, they were told verbally that in the meantime, before they heard anything different, just to continue to operating and sending the annual reports as before. Um, there was no official action by the agency on that, um, on that request. So recognizing that this, um, this still wasn't resolved, a new process was commenced in 2023. A self-study was, uh, submitted about a year ago. Uh, the VHEC visit was last May. And I think you have the report, um, that resulted from that visit. Some of the key facts about the school, it's located in Bennington with some non-contiguous buildings, but all of which are in good shape. Uh, they have over sixty students this semester, forty-two undergrad, ten graduate, twelve early college and ten non-degree students. Uh, they have fifteen full-time faculty. A notable point about this school is that there is no public funding and no tuition. It's totally funded, uh, through private donations. And they are currently in a very ambitious ten-year campaign to continue to fund that. They are led by a dynamic leader, President Mark Ballard, who, um, who wears several hats and is the chief fundraiser for the school. Um, you'll see one of the concerns in the report is the amount of weight he carries on his shoulders and the question of what happens when President Ballard is no longer, um, the head of the school. They are looking, as you see in the green sheet, to add some graduate programs. Um, overall, their, their school is governed by four institutional objectives. To develop scholars, uh, critical thinking scholars, um, to develop their students spiritually, spiritual formation, to encourage a passion for ministry and to give them the discipline, uh, to persevere in their ministry. Uh, they do have a committed alumni network that is supportive of the school, um, about fifty, um, fifty alums in that network. Some of the strengths I'll just highlight that are in the report, um, which I thought the report was excellent, by the way. Um, very helpful, very thorough. Um, the team led by Dr. Richard Schneider, who used to be, um, in charge of Norwich, um, did an excellent job. Uh, the strengths of the mission, it drives everything. Uh, people are committed to the mission. They know the mission. Um, and it does govern all their decisions. Uh, their faculty are well-qualified and very committed to the welfare of their students, um, going above and beyond outside the school day, um, to help them in a variety of ways. They have a coherent academic program, um, and have specified learning outcomes. They, uh, they have support for student learning beyond the classroom, um, both academic, academic and social emotional. They, um, the, the staffing in the school overall is sufficient for the current size. There is a concern about staffing. Once the school grows, as they hope that it will, um, especially by adding, uh, graduate programs. Um, another strength is their goal of debt-free education. Uh, the space is adequate for their current size. They're adding new resident facilities and renovating others. Again, there's a concern about what happens if their enrollment continues to grow. Um, they have, um, well-thought-out procedures and handbooks and policies. Some of the concerns you'll see notice in the recommendation, the motion I'm going to make, that there are several conditions for this approval. And that's because there's a number of concerns. One concern is the assessment of the institution and program, um, needs to be, um, further developed. The faculty and student learning assessment is already underway. The school is committed to a five-year cycle, but, um, acknowledges that they're probably going to reduce that to a three-year cycle of institutional and program assessment. The breadth and depth of the general education programs is acknowledged as a problem, especially the notable absence of social science classes. The school is adding or has added a couple, but recognizes that this is an area to grow. Uh, I've already mentioned the ability to support the projected enrollment growth. Um, there's a concern about, uh, their statement of, of access to pastor courses for females. This school has some alternative classes they can take, but they are not, as women are not included in courses that are field studies for pastors. The, I already mentioned the reliance on the president, especially for succession. They are hiring additional staff, including a development director to take care of that concern. The fundraising goals are ambitious, um, not fully being met, but the president, uh, Ballard, President Ballard is confident that they will meet those goals. Um, they have experienced significant support recently that has allowed them to stem the increase of the deferred compensation or the, the not complete, incomplete compensation. There are concerns about internal controls, um, but the current system is working. It's not ideal. Um, they are looking to, to add staff. You'll see that the report recommends they add at least one staff member, um, to the business office. A major concern, both earlier I mentioned and, and today, is that the employees are not paid their full salaries. Um, back pay is about 3.5 million, um, which is, um, this idea of back pay is common in church-related fields. Um, and does have some consequences in taxes and retirement benefits, but it's not expanding. And th- they're making progress in, um, decreasing that number of back, um, that amount of back pay. Another concern was their method of accounting, uh, which is a cash method of accounting. Um, not a real problem for auditors. Auditors make the, um, make the reconciliation happen. But it is, it is difficult then for not, um, for those charged with, uh, oversight to get accurate interim financial information. So the school is looking to improve that process. And the last concern was what happens if the school, um, doesn't, um, doesn't make it, um, as always. Um, and so there is a teach-out plan now in writing with Truett McConnell University that takes care of that concern. So I'm going to stop there before I make my recommendation, which will be the same that you see on your green sheet. So I don't know if people have questions, um, after having read the port, reporter, heard that summary of it.
You may have emphasized this already, Tom, but there are no state dollars that go to support the school.
Kim?
I'm sorry. Oh, the timing is everything. I'm so sorry for the dogs. Um, so there were a lot of concerns stated that seemed like a big deal, particularly in our responsibilities to ensure financial viability. And I'm wondering to what extent there are Title IX concerns in that women don't have access to the same programming? And, um, uh, the liability for unpaid salaries? I just, I'm trying to figure out, uh, our role when those big issues are evident and have been acknowledged. What is, what happens if we don't approve? And what does it mean if we approve with those issues outstanding? Regardless of, of public dollars, like how does it change their existence or not?
Right. I think the Title IX issue, um, and I'll have to go back and read that. I have to look for that in the report. But the Title IX issue was addressed by that they had, um, if it's not the same course, that there were equivalent courses, um, being offered. Um, the, my understanding of our responsibility is, um, kind of consumer protection. That this, this school will be in existence and that they are offering a quality program. Those are our, those are our responsibilities. The, the view of both the agency and the visiting team was that they've had, they've been able to make this work since 2010. And they're making progress in areas that were concerns, like things are improving, they're not getting worse. So they, I think you'll see the four-year approval window that the secretary is recommending also involves annual reports on a number of issues that were raised in the concern. So there's a, there's a plan to monitor this school's continued progress. Everybody though, that we heard from, including the VHEC team, was confident that they, that we had those two issues covered, that consumers being protected, that this would be in, this, this school was going to make it through this approval period and that the program that they are offering is of good quality.
I'm going to try quickly before the dogs go. What happens if we don't approve it? Like what happens to the situation?
They would not be able to offer degrees.
So, and I'll echo, I mean, there are a number of concerns, you know, particularly in the financial arena that are concerning. But I also note that, you know, Vermont Higher Education Council is recommending their approval. The Agency of Education is recommending their approval. The committee, the Independent School, or 2200 Approvals Committee, I believe is recommending their approval. So I guess my concern, and I did go through 2240 this morning. And if, you know, so there, if they are approved, they would have to submit annual reports. And could you explain the process of what would happen if the secretary felt that, you know, some aspect of the report was concerning? What would be the process from there?
I think I will hand it over to Heather.
Can you ask, can you answer, ask me that again? I was actually from point in chat. Because I think, because I think the point is a good one, it's well-taken. Kim's point, and it made me think we've never brought forth approval and we don't have any, but we could, for instance, have a non-coed institution that would ask for approval here. And we might be in kind of the same boat there. It's a little bit different, but it's kind of what I was thinking. So anyway, sorry.
That's okay. So what I was asking is, you know, the recommendation, if the school is approved, is that they would have to provide annual reports to the secretary. A report contains something that was concerning to the secretary. Given that, you know, they're under this four-year conditional approval. What would happen? Like what would that look like if the secretary identified a concern? What would be the process?
We would follow our process, which is similar to what happens with PK-12 independent schools. And so that would be part of the sort of regular feedback and monitoring process that occurs. And so if there were a concern and it reached the level of the agency feeling that it was not in line with what the approval state, the approval from the State Board of Ed stated needed to be carried out, then we would come forth with another green sheet and say to the board, here's what's happening, here's our recommendation. That's really just following the current process. And I would ask Cassandra if she might want to weigh in, because she's been doing this for a very long time. And sorry to put you on the spot, Cassandra, but it has been a while since we've approved, since the board has, since we've had a green sheet from the agency for post-secondary approval. So please feel free to jump in and.
Yeah, no, I am here, I can't come on camera, oh wait, no, I can come on camera now. I think Maureen unfroze my camera. Let's see, yes, there I am. Okay, so yeah, I appreciate actually being able to offer a little bit of context because I think this is a different type of application, it's a different kind of process. Haven't seen a lot of activity on this for a lot of reasons. But one, I just want to impress that opening a post-secondary school is not easy and there's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all. There's a lot of, you know, niche opportunities and this is certainly fitting into that. I do want to say that we have received no student complaints since they opened. That's a really good indicator. When I say no, I really mean zero. We have received no communication of, you know, of any kind of negative or less than satisfactory experience from students. That's not the case for all of our postsecondaries in Vermont. We receive those fairly regularly. In addition, I do want to say that the initial approval was conditioned and NEBC representatives, including President Ballard, has remained completely cooperative in sending us those materials, discussing anything that we want to discuss. I think it has been a very open communication and I would be the one receiving the materials. So anything you condition will come to myself and my team. And if anything looks like something that should be escalated, it is my job to escalate it up to both Secretary Boucher and our General Counsel. So that would be the process for me. If I received the materials, which I am the one that will at this point, I would review them as I need to, as I'm supposed to. And then if I see a concern, I will escalate it up. It's really hard to anticipate what the concern might be, right? Like it could be a little different depending which, what concern there could be.
So I don't know, Jenna, if that answers your question.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, thank you, Heather, and thank you, Cassandra. That's helpful.
Any other questions before I make the motion?
Mohammed has a question.
I hear, thank you for all your insight and.
Mohammed is frozen. Why don't we pop over to Kim and then we'll go back to Mohammed.
Thanks. I remain a little stuck on the financial controls piece of it. And then there was one other area that I read that it sounds as though there's lack of clarity on the confidentiality of student counseling and their process for that. And that was a bit of a red flag for me. But again, I'm being unfamiliar with how deep we go into these things. Those seem like sort of foundational issues. I just, if there was review happening since their initial approval and our answer is it hasn't gotten worse, but it's not gotten better and they've been able to sustain in that way, is that an okay standard for us? Or are we looking to see that, like, the back pay is declining because that's been taken care of and would speak to their financial viability moving forward? Or I'm trying to figure out what our standard should be so that it, should we start to see or have more of these? We have something that is consistent with what we seem to expect in our rules.
So the, I think I can answer part of that. The internal controls, if you notice, it was at towards the end of the report, they, they said they have internal controls, it's not ideal, and they're looking to improve them by hiring an extra staff member. But what they have works as an internal control. And with the help of their auditors, they've been improving their processes in that area. And then as far as what would happen, so the five, I'll just look at the five conditions that I'm going to suggest that we attach to this approval. One is that we get annual updates on their enrollment plan and their fundraising plan, including financial expectations over three-year time periods. So we know what their plan is and how they're doing moving forward for the course of this approval or the length of this approval. All of their 990s, all of their audited financial statements with the opinion letter and their response to, and that would take care of the internal control question. The progress, to your point, Kim, about paying back back salaries, that will be an annual report, are they making progress of that or not? And then alternating, starting this year, progress on adding those graduate programs that are part of this motion and implementing that assessment plan for the institution and programs that I mentioned earlier. So those are the, those will be the annual reports. We will, I think that is our responsibility to check to see that they're doing what they say is going to happen. And the sense I got from Dr. Schneider and his team was that they have been moving in the right direction since, like they didn't stop when they, when they didn't get their their request made. They had received a two-year approval timeline. And then they just kept going for the next stretch, continued to improve and report to the agency during that time. So that gave them a lot of comfort that they're going to continue to do that same thing, especially now that they have shored up a lot of the weaknesses that were in that first report.
And what would cause us, what conditions would need to be present for us? And I am sorry to ask a hypothetical question, but for us to not recommend? These just are big fundamental things. So what would have been a tipping point where we'd say, I'm not sure we can actually recommend with confidence that, that this organization is financially viable? Do we?
I'll speak for myself and then maybe Cassandra wants to jump in or Heather. But for me, when you send a team of professionals like Dr. Schneider in to take a look at a school to see if it's viable and if they are providing a quality program, and they come back with a lengthy and well-written and thorough report that says they think so, that this is what they would, this is what they would recommend. I put a lot of, I put a lot of weight in that recommendation. I put a lot of stock in their professional opinion because we're not, I'm not at the school, I haven't been to the school. So I'm taking the advice of the the professor, the relative experts in the field. I see Heather has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo a little bit of what you said, Tom. You know, I do have a background in higher ed. I was surprised, I will say that I was surprised at the four-year timeframe versus another three-year. But I would agree with Tom that I did not do the review. I think that these are trusted entities who know what they're doing. They did a very thorough job. And, you know, I think we're, we're following the process and that's important.
Well, and let me just go back to Mohammed. Mohammed, you froze when you were asking your question. And so we went to Kim, but if you still have your question, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I got frozen. There was an incoming call on my screen. I couldn't understand what that was. I kept yelling microphone check, couldn't hear anything. But anyway, I was just trying to clarify around what I heard regarding the Title IX concern, whether we are expecting a concrete response to help us with this or understanding what is happening regarding women not being able to attend certain courses? What is the reason behind it? Could it be a religious reason, cultural reason that can be justified because of the religion? And that could be bypassed regardless of what Title IX says? If it's religious reason or cultural reason, again, that could potentially be bypassed by Title IX? Could we get anything?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's correct, Mohammed. But I'll see Jenna and Heather both have their hands up, but then I'll respond after.
The best of my knowledge that there is a religious exemption. And I think that the core of the college is, has a culture and a mission that's based on religious beliefs. And I think that's different than this process when we've gone through looking at other independent schools. And I felt going through the review that there's a commitment to also self-evaluation of the current program and any program that they're doing. They came up with a community of practice that can look through some of the concerns or issues that were raised on the report and really address them as a team. And I also have a belief that they're looking at expansion and it takes more faculty to expand, right? Like, so I think there's the current pattern, staffing pattern, and if they're not able to secure other funding, then they're not going to be able to expand. So I think there's a reasonable
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I think we're talking about a lot of different things and I just want to clarify. So Title IX is specifically linked to whether you qualify and can accept federal funds. That is not the remote case here. They're not asking for federal funds, nothing of that nature. And I think it's really important to note, they're not actually asking for public funds either, and state public funds. And so I really am nervous that we're kind of doing some almost mission slide in terms of like what the role is of the State Board in this particular instance. You know, it's not that these are wrong or bad ideas, but the rules need to change if that's what the focus should be. So again, I know I'm kind of a broken record, but I feel like we, the agency, and then the ask of the State Board is to follow the process as it's, as it's put in place. So, you know, and I think the financial viability is relevant because that does focus, as you started out by saying, Tom, on the, this really came originally from a consumer protection perspective. Now, maybe that's not what the board would like this to continue to be, but that's what we're, that's what we're left with at the moment. But again, even with those challenges, my, I am, my recommendation, I stand by it because I feel that, I feel, I trust and value and respect the VHEC committee that did this work. They are not interested, in my experience with working with them over several years now, ever in just shirking their duties or not. You know, they, they're very thorough in their reviews. And I think because of that, we've come to really appreciate and respect, respect their recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you. Kim, I see your hand up.
Thanks. The issue of accessibility and others, thank you for clarifying the Title IX application. And I completely understand that in much of higher education, there's certainly focused intention and mission by organizations. There are just a lot of financial red flags in addition to sort of the lack of clarity in processing and confidentiality or access to classes and things like that are, there are just a lot of, so I'm trying to figure out, while I'm grateful for such a thorough report, we don't see these very often. And if it is that we are sort of rubber stamping a report from the outside organization that does it, is there like a separate certification process that happens in higher education like we have in independent schools that are like NACI accredited? Or it? Or it it what would that look like in the infrequency of occasions we see these? And the reliance on the recommendations from this outside organization? I guess we we either have a robust role in the approval or we have a a structure that says this is really sort of the certifying. Organization and our role is more perfunctory, so I'm just not sure that I'm clear.
So I see Lyle's hand up, but I'll, I'll just move, we um, we had a lengthy meeting with this. Have at least twelve areas that we just, that I discussed that linked, I had twelve specific questions based on the report. So it wasn't a rubber stamp so much as an exploration of the report, the report being the first word in this conversation like it is with independent school approvals. The second, yes, there are accrediting agencies like we have in the independent school world. They are, as I mentioned, they're pursuing that, they should be accredited in the next, within the next five years, but they think sooner. So there is, we will get something like this. I would say that the VHEC report is as as thorough as I've seen any visiting team report, and it's a really, it's a really thoroughly. And I think that the concerns for financial viability are the key ones and the ones why it was a two-year approval window last time. The fact that the that the VHEC team went in knowing that and then saw the progress in recommending a four-year window. I have no, I have no reason to doubt their expertise. I don't think I know more than they do on what would be a viable window. And we have the safeguards in place in the motion that I'm about to make that would would allow the agency to step in if they saw that that was not happening. I do want to just mention, Mohammed, there is a religious aspect to the reason that they um. They go by the first letter Timothy and the that women should not be pastors. So that's, that's their, that's why they make that. So the ones that are field studies actually for being pastors in their church, that's why they make that, that, that rule, that exclusion. And Lyle, you said you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think you just said everything I was gonna say, far better than I would have. But I too, when we first started going through this, it was a bit of a shock in my mind that we were going from asking for attestations from every school in the public school system to then looking at higher education and a school that women weren't allowed into certain classes and that there were other alternative classes. So for me, it was like I had to change the channel on my television. The the process is in place. As we reviewed that, as everyone has said, the report was amazing. Their program is good, they have every piece of paper, I think, in place that they need to have in place. The funding piece is the question mark, but the staff are aware when they come into work that this is what they're coming in. And if there's money, they get paid, if there isn't money, they don't get paid. A totally different system than in public education than we're used to. So I think based on where the process, they are a viable school and they are going for third, third-party accreditation. Seems like they're taking all the right steps. I don't see any reason not to approve them. I apologize for the background noise, people are having too much fun here.
So Tom, I think maybe we can have you read your motion.
Okay, and just for those taking minutes, I am gonna read just that we accept the secretary's recommended action that is printed on the green sheet. For the State Board of Education grants renewal of Northeastern Baptist Colleges in E B C. Certificate of Approval to offer credit-bearing courses and certificate of degree-granting authority for associate and bachelor programs. And approve the addition of the master's level programs in Biblical Studies, which include Applied Theology, Advanced Applied Theology, and Biblical Exegesis of Old and New Testament for a period of four years commencing upon the date of the State Board of Education's approval. And contingent on N E B C providing the Agency of Education annual reports on the following. Number one, an enrollment plan and a fundraising plan, including financial expectations over a three-year time period. Number two, copies of submitted annual nine-ninety tax forms. Number three, copies of approved annual external audited financial statements with accompanying opinion letter and response. Number four, progress made on the extent to which back salaries stated in employment contracts are honored and paid. And number five, on alternate years starting in twenty-twenty-four. A report on progress made regarding launch of the graduate programs and implementation of the assessment plan.
All right, so Tom has read the motion, is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, seconded by Lyle, thirded by Jenna. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand, re-signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Tom, and thank you to Cassandra and the agency, Lyle and Jenna, just for the work that you did. Because again, I mean, like, we have not had a post-secondary school approval. So this was kind of new territory, but as Tom said, it was set up in a somewhat similar way to the independent school approval process. Thank you. All right, this takes us to future meeting planning. I know in February, we're gonna have EQS update, twenty-two-hundred update. There will also be a presentation by Ruth Durkey and Justin Carolis regarding CTEs. And it might be fun to invite the presidential scholars in and see if we can get some of them to come. Talk to the board about what they've been doing and where they plan to go in the next year or so. Anything else that board members can think of? Kim?
Sorry, at the end of our last meeting, we also talked about looking at a board work calendar and roles and responsibilities. And that, I think, came up also in your testimony, Jennifer. So as Jennifer and I spoke, I I was gonna take a stab at sort of looking at what statute says currently our responsibilities are. Creating a list of what those are, because I think we are so heavily focused in our regulatory responsibilities that that is always the tail wagging the dog. And there are some other things that maybe are standing responsibilities that are more proactive in nature. And we've, I think, held off on some of that because it had seemed as though that may be being addressed in the legislature. And as Jennifer and I spoke, I promised that I was gonna at least take a first stab at looking at that skeleton, sharing it with Jennifer and seeing where we go from there in terms of the calendar, agenda planning for the year on those things that maybe create an initial structure in addition to all the work we do that's responsive to other things.
Yeah, and I think, I think it'd be helpful to have that as a starting point and and maybe to use that to go back to the General Assembly. Because, you know, as I look at our, you know, responsibilities as set forth in statute, I think a lot of those were, I say every year, a lot of those seem to be left over from when the board oversaw the agency. You know, we don't have staff, we don't have resources, and a lot of the things that seem to be asked of the board might be better addressed by the agency. So I think that would be a good inflection point to maybe say, here are some things that really, you know, unless we have staff and capacity. We should turn these things over to the agency. So that will be a good starting point for our conversation, and thank you, Kim, for compiling that. Anything else?
I'm not sure if we'll have schools for for approval or renewal. I haven't heard, heard that. I will not, I will not be at the the February meeting, however, so those will have to come to March.
All right. Anything else? All right, so this takes us to Public to Be Heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board? All right, again, I'm not hearing or seeing anybody. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Kim and seconded by Tom. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Please raise your hand, re-signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right, we stand in adjournment, the motion has been approved. Thank you all very much, and you have a good afternoon.
Thanks.